Being eleven forty-seven, I'll call the meeting to order and welcome, ladies and gentlemen. We have the full attendance of the committee here today, being Mayor Theresa Harding, Deputy Mayor Nicole Johnick, councillor Jacob Madsen, councillor Poyle Augustine and councillor Marney Doyle and deputy chairperson councillor Antonelli. I'll do the acknowledgement of country now. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters that we all share. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, customs and cultures and stories of proud people. Are there any declarations of interest? I don't see anyone declaring a declaration of interest, so I move on to the first item on the agenda, being Confirmation of Minutes of the Environment Sustainability Committee number two thousand and twenty-five oh six of twenty-two July two thousand and twenty-five. Can I have somebody that's read the meeting to, councillor Antonelli's moved the meeting, councillor Madsen has seconded the minutes? Is there any discussion about the minutes? Okay, I'll put it to a vote, those in favour of the minutes, all in favour, unanimous, thanks very much. I'll move on now to officers' reports. The first officer report that is on the agenda is two thousand and twenty-five Get Ready Queensland Week. This is a report concerning Get Ready Queensland Week two thousand and twenty-five, which falls between six and twelve October two thousand and twenty-five. Get Ready Queensland Week is an annual statewide call to action, helping communities prepare for extreme weather and disasters. Do any committee members require a council officer to answer any questions? If no, there's no requirement for a council officer, we've moved it now, all in favour?
Councillor Madsen? May we discuss, may we discuss?
Oh, sorry, 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 ma'am, discussion?
Has it been moved and seconded?
Yeah, no, it has been moved and seconded councillor Antonelli, no, not this one, no, a mover and a seconder councillor Madsen. Councillor Madsen gave me a wink, so I presume-
I'm happy to move it, it's my fault actually, I made a joke with councillor Madsen that a quick game's a good game, and I think he's tried to-
Got me, got me right to race through it this morning, he's told me I must be quick today, so, yes, so councillor-
I've got nowhere to go, Jim, it was a joke.
I presume you're being, good one, good one. So we moved in second it, no one requires a council officer to give any, answer any questions? Now, we move, mayor, we move on to discussion.
No, thank you, look, it's that time of the year again when we remind our community to be prepared so that they can protect themselves, their family and their property when severe weather strikes. Get Ready Week is a great opportunity before that real storm season hits in to raise awareness within the community about disaster risk and to encourage action like making an emergency plan and packing an emergency kit. Information stores will be available in the community between the sixth and twelfth of October, and the disaster information that we have available is available in eleven languages, so I encourage people to familiarise themselves with that and prepare for the upcoming, let's hope we don't need it, but upcoming storm and bushfire season, thank you, Chair.
Thanks very much, ma'am, the recommendation is that the report on two thousand and twenty-five Get Ready Queensland Week be received and the contents noted. Those in favour?
Sorry, I was going to also-
Further discussion?
Yeah, I was also going to speak to it, but very, I'll be brief, considering our urgency, ma'am, Chair. I just wish to, again, just to reiterate what the ma'am said, but just a reminder to everybody that the disaster season does go a lot longer than what we once experienced, and of course tropical cyclone Alfred was an example of that coming much later in what is considered the disaster season, so, and I just highlight that during that particular event, the level of preparedness that the Ipswich community had is, has been as a result of many years of working with our community to try and prepare them better for local disasters, and as we see, this year's key messages do include understanding your local disaster risk, making an emergency plan and packing an emergency kit. And I would hope that the lessons learned during ex-tropical cyclone Alfred was such that we can never be too prepared, and that particularly in relation to a emergency kit, it should be every home's priority to have something like that put aside, ready and operational should it ever be required. So I just commend that to everybody and to listen to those messages during the Disaster Management Week and, or Get Ready Queensland Week, and if they haven't got an emergency kit, there is information online on how to put one together, thank you.
That's great councillor Antonelli, any other discussion? I'd just like to mention something related to Get Ready Week, and that is this week, which is SES Week. This week is SES Week, and I'd like to say a big thank you to our amazing SES volunteers who worked tirelessly to keep Queensland safe during times of emergency response and disaster, and I I'm well aware that it's not only in times of emergency response and disaster that we see our SES offices out and about, I know at our local shows and markets, there's always the SES offices there, and they often do traffic control at events such as the the motorbike rally each year at Christmas time leaving Brussel, so big cheer for our SES offices in Ipswich, and they've got a wonderful photograph of all of our SES offices in Ipswich on their Facebook page this week, and they're a wonderful group of people. So all, those in favour? All unanimous, all right, I'll move on to the next item on the agenda. The next item on the agenda is Resource Recovery Strategy and Implementation Plan Review. I have some questions of the acting GM and I'd ask him to come forward. David, if you can just say your name and your title.
Good morning, David McAllister, acting GM, Environment Sustainability Department.
David, you've done an excellent report for the committee meeting today, but I understand there's some extra information you'd like to outline?
Thank you councillor, and thank you Chair, I think it's probably an opportunity just to quickly touch on the fact that the strategy as it stood was a real step forward for Ipswich over the last three to four years, and being able to bring this review in and really discuss some of the actions and highlights that we've achieved over the last few years is a great opportunity, and just highlighting a few of those, obviously we've all experienced the garden organics rollout in the last few months, and the significant progress on our MRF and the implementation of the Large Items Programme, noting that these achievements meant that we had to review the strategy because many of the deliverables have been delivered, that's the whole point of the review, so thank you for the chance there, Chair, to touch on a few of those things.
Well, David, I'd like to congratulate you and your team for the rollout of the-
Thank you very much.
GO that was formerly Fogo, we sort of got over that there, and the complaints in my inbox have significantly, significantly decreased-
Very good.
Since the green top bins were delivered, I just wanted to get a bit of an idea of how much, how much garden organics have we now diverted to composting that we would otherwise go to landfill?
So for the first month, because we've really only got the data for the first month, I think we ticked over, just over five hundred tonnes for the first period, and importantly, we also saw that our waste volumes were stagnated comparable to the year before, so it meant we didn't see an increase in waste volume, and we saw nearly a doubling in our curbside bin green waste volume.
Five hundred tonnes, what's the current rate for one tonne to go to landfill?
So obviously I can't touch on the exact rate from a commercial and confidence, so if you think about levy alone and your your comparative rate, if you use somewhere between a hundred and eighty and two hundred dollars a tonne is your rough, for every tonne you divert, you are achieving quite a significant diversion, and obviously that's been one of the coldest months of the year, so there was very little green waste. Presentation was still quite high at thirty or forty per cent, but we do expect that to grow to seventy or eighty per cent in summertime peaks, so we expect a lot more tonnage as we get into summer.
Do any other council officers have any questions about the progress with regard to the green top bins? If there's no questions-
I have questions, but I'm not a council officer, I'm a councillor, I'd like to-
A councillor, councillor laws, sorry, councillor laws, yeah councillor laws, yes.
You're probably not going to be surprised at some of the questions I'm going to ask, we had our briefing. My number one thing would be the fact that in our two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and thirty-one Resource Recovery Implementation Plan, we did state that we would have a resource recovery, a new one set up in the twenty-six, twenty-seven financial year, and I can see from this that's probably not going to happen to two thousand and thirty-one. We obviously have a site out at Red Bank Plains, that area there. I guess for me, the main thing is, I guess if, do you mind going to explaining this to residents, because it does impact our ability to have a fair bit of, we need the expansion, but also it impacts other options that we're looking at, but if we are doing two vouchers in the future, we cannot do that with our current site, so it's really important for us to plan to the future, so if you could go into the reasons why this has moved from being delivered in the twenty-six, twenty-seven financial year to two thousand and thirty-one, thank you.
I suppose if I go back to the development of the strategy, when we developed the strategy, there was a lot of unknowns about that site and about that location, even to the point of getting ownership and control of the site, took some significant time with the entity that was there before. Since then, we've had to know a lot of work on the geological conditions of the site to ensure it is suitable and stable for what we want to build, and as you rightly point out, with the significant growth to the city and the size and scale of that facility, we want to make sure we get it right, so we're not where I want it to be, hundred per cent, but we are wanting to make sure we get it right, and it's a significant investment for the city. To cater for that though, we have also obviously done significant upgrades to Riverview and Rosewood to cater for growth, and as we were discussing at briefing, we are seeing a constant and significant growth in the amount of visits to our facilities, so it is number one on my agenda to push forward that facility, so hundred per cent accept, ma'am, where we're at, and we're going to push as hard as we can and as fast as we can to get our facility up and running.
I think the community will probably appreciate it, it's a four-year delay, do you mind just going, I know you said it took some more time for acquiring, and there's geotech, but do you mind just giving a bit of it, because that is a fair work of time-
It is a fair work, I think-
Do you mind just giving people a sort of appreciation of-
There was at least eighteen months at the front end, which was removal of the tenant who was there, and those actions did mean that it took us a while just to get to that point, and then some of the geotechnical work alone, some of these programmes are minimum six months to a year programmes, so we finished two sets of consulting work on that, and with the latest round of work being presented back to us literally as we speak this month, to really work through the final costing estimates on the revised facility, so and then I think we touched on before, we started drilling right when, after the cyclone, so there was operational challenges when you have these events on big wide swathes of land like that, so it has proved to be quite a challenging programme to work through in the timeframes we set up, so.
I guess, and through the Chair, when will, we haven't, as councillors, seen the geotech reports yet, I know they're coming, but when will we see them? I know you're working up costs, but when will we see them?
Hopefully within the next two to three months, like until I actually see the set of reports and we've worked through those of late, so we are very hopeful to be bringing this back through our PCG and the Infrastructure Board in the next several months, so it's we're getting to a point where all that information's laid out in front of us to make those final decisions.
I can see that you and your team have put a lot of work into optimising Rosewood and Riverview with a lot of changes. How much, how many years does that, grace does that give us?
Yeah, that's the chicken and egg question, isn't it? I think twofold, first thing to really contemplate is that Riverview will be around for thirty, forty years, it's not going anywhere. We did an extra twenty thousand visits through there last year, so in context, if we're growing at that sort of rate, those timeframes that we've put in place, there's probably another eighty to a hundred thousand visits we're having to accommodate in the existing network by two thousand and thirty-one or so, so short answer is, the sooner we build our new facility, the better. The long answer is, we've still got to get that right, and we've got to cater for the growth over the period, so the work we have done at Riverview in particular, when there's one more piece around traffic management now that we want to really focus on trying to improve the queuing aspect of that site, is now has significant capacity increases for the weekends. So we are hopeful that the site has allowed us some leeway to move people through the facility as best we can.
Part of, when you come back to us with the assessment, will you be looking at, I mean, the plan has been to build the Southern Resource Recovery Centre first and then the Western? Will that be assessed, I mean, if the geotech comes a certain way, will we, is it on the cards that we could be doing the Western first, or, I'm not sure yet?
They are in essence separable pieces of work. The Western population growth is lagging behind the Southern growth, so from a timing point of view, we probably don't need to have that up and running for, you know, probably three or four years post that. The work at the Western continues on with land acquisitions and so to make sure we're set up for the future, and obviously we don't want to invest money out there ahead of when we need to invest money, they are separable, they're not and one's not stopping the other one, if you know what I mean, you could do the other one first if you wanted to, it would be more of a programme if you needed to or not.
Thank you, Mr McCallister, thank you, Chair.
Thanks, thanks, ma'am, any other questions for the gen- yes, Marney?
Thank you, Mr McCallister, I've just got a couple of questions specifically around the on-demand large item curbside collection. In the report, we mentioned the service has achieved sixty-nine per cent recycling rates, how does that compare?
To what it was before?
Yeah.
Zero, so before it was zero, so one of the primary purposes-
Yeah.
Primary purposes of doing this programme was to have a significantly improved recovery rate. The previous programme from an operational point of view was very difficult to achieve that, you would need to have separate vehicles running down the streets and separable collections and leave differing piles out, and it would have got very operationally messy.
Yes.
So the whole purpose of the new programme was to allow a product to be taken to a different location for sorting where it's sorted, and now what we're seeing is that close to, and at times over seventy per cent recovery rate, which is a really good outcome.
Given it's an independent contractor that we've given this to, what sort of monitoring do we do to ensure, I guess, tests that they are actually recycling as possible?
Right down to site visits ourselves to the locations where the product is taken, we've been and seen it in action. We have normal monthly monitoring contract meetings with them, and it's one of those stats that me personally, I will challenge people because it's exactly like you said, I want to see that in action. So across the board, not just around the recycling, around the confirmation rates, the pick-up rates, all of those aspects are monitored on a very monthly basis to make sure they're achieving the outcomes, and the service has got itself to a very nice sort of balanced, consistent point. There is, the level of work is on budget to our expectation, so it's achieving very well, and it's very good to see that as a from where we started four, five years ago to go, we want to achieve this thing, to then see this outcome is a strategy in action and delivering what we wanted it to deliver.
Yes, I certainly used the service and it was very easy, very user-friendly. Lots of commentary on my Facebook page, I did a post about it, so it's interesting some of the feedback, so specifically, you know, residents do mention, oh, it's not all being recycled, but that's not correct. Just the one, the challenges around the bags not being collected, that was the other thing in feedback from the community, how is that being managed?
So the vast majority of what we see when bags aren't being managed is usually because the resident hasn't logged to have it removed.
Yes.
So we've got a process in place with the contractor where they have prompting emails go out now to those residents to say your three weeks is up, do you need your bag removed, and then there's a secondary follow-up, and then there's a third follow-up, and then potentially even a phone call, so where it's, where it's not the resident's fault, obviously we are monitoring that through the reporting, we have a live portal into their system to see those numbers, but we're seeing, and I will quote a number, and don't quote me because I'm pulling off the top of my head, that's around ninety-eight, ninety-nine per cent of bags collected in timeframe, so it is something they monitor quite heavily, and we work very closely with the compliance department and compliance branch to make sure we are linking our conversations with residents together, and we can see that activity, and they can also see that portal to know that a bag has been on the curb for, for how long, what I would encourage is if anybody sees a bag out for a long time, just log a job and let us know, and we can chase it up.
Exactly, and I, as I mentioned, I found the process very user-friendly and certainly had numerous prompts, you're running out of time, running out of time. I rallied the troops in my household to, you know, pick up the junk, so I found it very user-friendly, however, yes, there was lots of commentary that there's bags left everywhere all across the city, now I don't see that, but I was interested to know again, because it's given to a third party to do for us, how we do monitor.
Yeah, we can see it very graphically, it's a tail on a graph of how many's hanging at the bottom end of that for pickup, and it is a very small number relative to the to the big, but it's one of those things people see in their mind, I'm seeing it, it's out there all the time.
But we are able to absolutely monitor that, great, thank you.
Just on that point, David, when is the contract for the blue bag system reviewable, renewable?
I'll have to come back to you exactly councillor, I think we did an initial seven-year term from memory.
And it's been going two years?
It's this in two years now, yeah, I'd have to double check, but there was one of those ones where you want to put a long enough contract to get the benefits and the efficiency out of it, I will come back to you, it may have been, it may have been five plus two, so I'll have to double check.
Well, that's great, David, and thank you very much for clarifying those questions, that's, you can sit down.
Thank you.
Committee members, the recommended motion for this, this item, item four on the agenda is that the quarterly report of the Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Directive be received and the contents noted, do I have a mover for that one? Oh, that's not, is it, oh, sorry, thanks very much. Yeah, the recommendation is the councillor approved the updated and new actions proposed with the Resource Recovery Strategy and the Implementation Plan Review, and update pillars in accordance with the statutory update of the councils' Resource Recovery Strategy, do I have a move with that one? Who's going to do it, yes councillor, councillor Johnick and councillor Antonelli is seconding that, any further discussion? No further discussion?
Yes, yes, discussion?
Yes, yes.
Just making sure if the first of this, no, just making sure if you wanted to speak. Thank you, Chair, very passionate about waste, and I think it's really important to know that we all create waste. Council doesn't create the waste that we pick up, we are, we all credit as individuals and as families and as a community, and in Ipswich we generate about one thousand and eighty tonnes per household on average, and that was the figure from the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four financial year, so it's quite astounding when you look at that. We have faced many challenges in the waste space as our population rapidly grows, with the waste levy increases, the changes to legislation and policies, as well as the constraints we face on existing waste facilities. But in the last three years, we have made major headway in recovering resources and reducing waste to landfill. Recycling rates have increased from twenty-four per cent in two thousand and nineteen to twenty-six point seven per cent in two thousand and twenty-four, and glass was reintroduced into recycling bins. As councillor Doris spoke, we have implemented a free annual on-demand large item curbside collection, which has diverted over a thousand tonnes from landfill. As accounts would progress, the Subregion Alliance Material Recovery Facility with Redland and Logan councils to renovate, and that continues. And the report also sets out the changes to the implementation plan, which guides how councils will deliver on the priorities identified in the strategy. I must say, I am disappointed with how far things have moved, but I do understand that it hasn't been because people were sitting on their hands, that there are some things that, best of intentions, that there are time delays on, on, especially the the Resource Recovery Centres, which we so desperately need, so I'll continue to, you know, prod the organisation and to make sure that we get that done for our community. Our waste facility networks and our waste operations need to expand to adequately service our community, it's very important that we do have that. I'd like to commend people to look at, I guess, page seven of the review, or on our page, it's, I think it's twenty-four or forty-one. It goes into some good detail, and probably a really good graph on the impact of the waste levy, and if I can just show that the waste levy is a state government levy, and it's going up each year, and at the time it was introduced, the state government reassured councils and house, and more importantly, our community, that, that the waste collection for households would not increase. So the state government gives a rebate to councils to accommodate that, and you can see in the in the graph there that last year, the delta was just over half a million dollars and we wore it, but this financial year, it's now like nearly, nearly two million dollars, and as you can see, going up over the next between twenty-four and thirty-four, that's an extra ninety million dollars that we estimate will be borne by the rate payers of Ipswich. I want to thank the local governor, Soty Teshaw Queensland, for running the Bin Your Tax, Bin the Tax campaign. It's quite clearly an unfair tax on households, it's unfair, and if the state government wish to do that, they can tax the people themselves rather than using councils and, and for what is their tax. But probably what's most disappointing is that that money's supposed to be used for, to assist us to reduce landfill. When I look at the latest figures, in twenty-three, twenty-four, the state government received four hundred and twenty-eight point eight million dollars in waste levy in one year alone, so since it was initiated, they've obviously collected billions of dollars in waste levy, and they need to make sure that they release that money to councils and others to, to reduce landfill. That's not happening certainly as quick as we'd like to see it, so I think it's really unfair that we, that the households are being, are copping this waste levy and the reduced rebate, and certainly encourage any residents to put a lot of pressure on the state government to make sure that this stops. It's not a fair tax, and also the levy should be coming back to councils and waste operators to make sure that we reduce landfill. I'll end the rant there, but thank you very much, Chief, for allowing me to say that.
Thanks, ma'am, any other, any other speakers? I'd just like to say a few things, I think we, history is a great teacher, and the history of the waste levy was to stop trucks from New South Wales coming to Queensland. And for a time, the levy was removed, and we saw a flood of trucks coming from New South Wales to Queensland. And clearly the waste levy has achieved that objective, but unfortunately it's morphed into a different beast now, and that is a revenue for the state government, and I guess that's okay, you know, that's fine, as long as all the revenue raised is then returned to councils who are, who are paying for it, I've got to remember that industry also pays for it, it's not just councils that pay the waste levy. But at least with regard to the monies that are received from councils, that money should go back to councils to do things like green top bins and programmes like that, and it's disappointing that those, those issues, just as you've outlined, ma'am, and the issues I've just spoken about, are not being discussed in the community, you know, that this has become a bucket of money for the state government, and we know now that that bucket of money's going to increase greatly. But this has become a bucket of money for the count uh for the state government. And we know now that that bucket of money is going to increase greatly. Over the next five years. So I I think it needs to be reviewed and I'm really grateful that the local government association in Queensland are fighting that battle. But it really needs to be something that becomes an election issue, discussed in the community. And people are aware of, aware of the history of this matter and how we've sort of gone from the left lane to the right lane. And we, the the road in front of us is a completely different road to what it was, you know, when when the levy was introduced. Um there are no further questions. Um I need a mover and second. Got him? Well, um I'll put it to the vote. Those in favour? Good, that's unanimous. Now, the final officers' report we have today, item four. Is the Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Directive Quarterly Report. This is an update report on the continuing implementation of the Ipswich City Council Waste and Circular. Economy Transformation Policy Directive, uh following following the review of the directive at the ordinary council meeting. Held on the fourth of September two thousand and twenty four. The recommendation is that the quarterly report. On the Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Directive be received and the contents noted. Do any um councillors present require? A council officer to answer any questions? Um is there any discussion?
After you move and seconded.
I do I need a mover, councillor Antonelli, and a seconder, councillor Doyle. Now, we'll have discussion, Mayor.
So I, th- thank you, Chair. Um the Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Policy Directive um was a very deliberate move by this council. We will to make sure that we use the full power that we have of our policy and legal instruments to drive performance improvements of waste management operations within Ipswich. We do need to see better outcomes for our community as no suburb should be impacted by the waste industry. The Ipswich City Plan twenty twenty five includes a Resource Recovery Waste and Activity Code to specifically address planning for the appropriate location. And design of waste activities and to support resource recovery initiatives. Council has completed recruitment of a compliance officer in a temporary position which will assist with the delivery of enhanced education and compliance activities. This year will also integrate sustainable procurement practices into council's existing procurement framework, prioritizing local and ethical suppliers. Assessing environmental and social impacts and employing lifecycle analysis. And I know you've touched this before, Chair, but the the garden organics bins have been rolled out across uh Ipswich. Uh with the first month generating an eighty percent increase in materials recovered. So it's a very promising start to what we'll see as we continue. And I just. I can't help, as we do the review, just to um acknowledge councillor Doyle in in twenty twenty. Um in in that that leadership that she showed to get this um Waste and Circular Economy um Policy Transformation Directive. Up and running to be very strategic and how do we, you know, in, you know, make sure that we do address the many, many. Waste issues we have within as a council, but also in our community with the waste industry. Thank you, Chair.
Uh any other discussion?
Um.
Yes, councillor Doyle.
Just want to acknowledge um the mayor's comments. Um I was going to speak to it, but I think she summed things up um pretty nicely. Yes. Um the the policy um directive that we put in place in twenty twenty was considered um. You know, a a flagship um piece of work um for the new council and. It's a good example of where you put um some good robust policy in place. And all these years on, we're still. Um seeing great outcomes from that. And um we were, we were slightly bold with our approach, but we needed that. Our residents. Demanded that of us um through that election period um due to the 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 ODA issues predominantly. So, yeah, really, really um pleased to see this work continuing and look forward to getting more updates.
Uh any other comments by councillors? The only other thing I wanted to say was, as councillor Doyle has mentioned, this began in two thousand and twenty. And clearly, we've got a long way to go. We haven't built, we haven't built the Southern Resource Recovery Centre yet and we. We haven't upgraded the Western resource. That's not a criticism. It's just an indication that there there are major issues that our council will have to deal with. In the future. And of course, then we've got the Materials Resource Recovery Centre that we're building along with Logan and Redland. And that'll be a major change. Our yellow top bins, the the products of our yellow top bins will not go to Visi at the Port of Brisbane. For them to make a profit on, it'll go to ours, our facility. And that'll be another change. So um there's a lot more on this on this journey. Um and I'm sure there's something that's going to come up and affect us again. In the future, maybe it might be contaminated land or something like this, or um PFAS or something like this. So we're continually dealing with this and residents should be aware of the amount of time that council officers and councillors. Spend dealing with the issues of waste and how we deal with waste and how we also deal with the cost of waste, you know, in an equitable way. Well, that's my comments. I suppose I'll put it to the vote. Are those in favour? Good, unanimous again. That was the final um councillors' uh council officers' report. Next item on the agenda is a notice of motion and I haven't been informed of any notice of motion. Um the next one's matters arising. I haven't been informed of anyone wishing to do matters arising. Uh are there any questions or general business? If there's none, I'll close the meeting. Close the meeting at twelve twenty one. Thanks, everyone.